It is seven o'clock, so as soon as the clerk and the mayor are ready, we will call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. When you're ready, will the clerk please call the roll, please?
I think he's in charge.
It is seven o'clock, so as soon as the clerk and the mayor are ready, we will call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. When you're ready, will the clerk please call the roll, please?
Councilperson Wu?
Here.
Councilperson Evans?
Here.
Councilperson Ursi?
Here. Could you speak up, sweetie?
Councilperson Colacetti?
Here.
Person Bishop?
Here.
Councilperson Wilken?
Here.
Councilperson Quisenberg?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, next we'll have approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes from 2:17, 2025, Committee of the Whole, and 2:24, 2025, City Council minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Is there any discussion or substantive corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Those minutes are approved. Next, we have additions to the agenda. We do have one addition to the agenda. We're adding a discussion of a liquor license for the hotel under staff report, so we will come back to that shortly. Any other additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to presentations and public input. If there's anyone in the audience or who has submitted a comment via email who would like to make a comment tonight, please come up to the microphone. If you're here in person, then you'll have a chance to speak. Seeing none, were there any emails that council members have been asked to read? Are the clerk, I'm seeing no? Okay. I thought the clerk didn't have any. I thought we had one that came in the past couple of weeks to read. I can see if I could try and find it real quick. Maybe an older one since we had a break.
Yeah, if you can access your email, it might be a few weeks old.
All right, if you can give me like 30 seconds, and then if not, maybe we can read it at the next one if that's acceptable.
It'll be entered into the record either way.
Yes, I found it. Are you willing to read that for us? Yes. Thank you. This is from Christopher Zell, Zelli. As per my previous complaints about your city employee failing to perform his core job duties while instead behaving grossly without any decorum for loss of life in our community, you have done nothing publicly to rebuke his behavior, censor his terrible messages, or correct his actions. By doing so, you're complicit in saying these are the low standards Urbana holds as a community. Some of you have been quiet as a church mouse on this issue with time enough to wax on and on about other issues during your council comment periods, including other FB, Facebook, I think, posts that excited all y'all more. I expect a response on this from each of you quieter council members on why you're failing our community from a leadership perspective. Council, fix your employee problem with the chief of police and hold that position to standards you hold other in-city employees to. Please read this into the record at your next meeting, Christopher Zell, champion of Urbana resident. Any other public comment? Okay, we will move on to staff report. Nothing? Okay, then we will move on to...
Can I just interrupt?
Yep.
I thought I understood you to say that the discussion item on the
I think so.
liquor license was going to be under staff report?
That's what my understanding is, so after the capital improvement plan?
Oh, after, okay, sorry.
So, yes, we'll, I guess, start with the capital improvement plan, and then we'll come back to the liquor license. Thank you.
Good evening, council. John and I are going to go over the capital improvement plan with you tonight, and we'll take feedback, and then we kind of try to leave this open for about a month to accept other public comments and inputs on these type of things moving forward. I'll let John kick it off.
Okay, well, like you're probably familiar with, we're going to bring this draft to you. This is a complete draft we have for the plan, but we are expecting to receive, you know, feedback from you as council, but also from other members of the public. And so, we're building in about a month period for a comment. And we'll come back in the middle of May on the 19th for a resolution to approve the CIP and incorporating comments and feedback that we get between now and then, which then the allocations approved in the CIP will come with the budget that is proposed to you in June for fiscal year '26. Okay, so today, we're going to go through really hit highlights of the executive summary of the CIP, go over some asset management items, and then spend the bulk of our time tonight getting into the projects, some of the higher dollar amount, higher profile projects. Want to get a chance to go over it with you, council members. Now, a lot of these will be familiar to you, but also for members of the public and other people who aren't as familiar. Okay, so for the executive summary, just starting off with a real high-level overview. We're looking at, this is a, you know, five-year spending plan for capital improvements, capital operating maintenance expenses for our infrastructure. And we have about $29.4 million of expenses at fiscal year '26. And then, for the period of fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '30, we're looking at a total of $95.2 million of expenses. And this is met by a little over $20 million in revenue in FY '26, and a little over $79 million in revenue over that five-year period as well. What the pie charts are kind of showing to you is that an interesting difference between, say, like, the revenues for FY '26 versus the five-year revenues is these dedicated fees are taking up a larger chunk of our infrastructure revenue, which I think, you know, is by design where we want our dedicated fees, like the stormwater utility fee, the local motor fuel tax, the state motor fuel tax, and the sanitary sewer benefit tax, to be a primary funding source for our infrastructure. Not as much, but we are, you know, definitely counting on other grants. We call them internal grants, money we can't always count on, like TIFT dollars, community development block grants, but also external grants as well as taking up a substantial part of that pie. Okay, and this is really going to mirror the executive summary. You know, there's a lot more meat in the report itself, the executive summary. This is kind of like us making a movie out of a good novel. The novel's probably better, if you have time to read it. So, we're going to go over the, some improved implementation of the CIP this last fiscal year, going over the Florida Avenue RACE grant, the good and the bad, the uncertainty about it. What are we doing with the increased local motor fuel tax revenue? Windsor Road project, we're going to talk about it one more time, maybe the last time, for at least a while, and talk about what are we doing with the, you know, consequence of that trial and everything. And then, kind of one of the larger projects is the Public Works Campus Improvement Project. Talk about where that project is going and how we're proposing to fund that. So, this is going to be a familiar chart. This is a chart we shared with you back in January of kind of a mid-year update, checking in with where we are with this fiscal year, fiscal year '25 compared with the same time a year earlier. And it's just illustrating how, you know, the bar chart on the right is taller, meaning we had a larger plan that we were trying to implement. And then, there was a larger portion of that plan that was getting implemented compared with the year before. So, we're just realizing gains from having a more fully-staffed engineering and public works department altogether. So, we're just glad to share that we're getting more of the plan implemented that we put together. We can expect to continue to have success like that this next fiscal year. Okay, so for the Florida Avenue, of course, there's an announcement early January that the city was selected for a RACE grant for the Florida Avenue project, $9.95 million. And then, later that month, that award got brought into question with the change in federal administration. Its status today is that the RACE grant is on hold pending review. Now, this year, we have not been told that we're not getting it. We have not been given any official notice to think that we're not, although it is possible, our understanding is they're reviewing projects that have been selected but not under a grant agreement to look for any specific elements of the project that the current administration would find objectionable. And so, we will, you know, waited, waiting, you know, anxiously to see what comes from that. For this year's CIP, we're cautiously assuming that we do continue to get that grant. And so, the CIP is built around that assumption, at least the state motor fuel tax fund is. And so, last year, we did not have a RACE grant in the CIP. And so, we were taking that Florida Avenue project and spreading it out over a four-year period, taking that same $10 million, breaking it up into four contracts. This year, we've brought those back together into one contract. That frees up that same money for other projects. And what we're doing with that other money in this plan is doing some of the same projects earlier, like Vine Street and Illinois Street, and the Lincoln Avenue Florida to Green project. Those are happening earlier because of this funding. We've also added in a new project later in the motor fuel tax plan for Vine Street from Florida to Washington, going in front of the high school, middle school campus there. Another topic we want to touch on in the executive summary is the local MFT rate increase. As you may remember, passed an ordinance in the last fiscal year, or last year, to increase the LMFT rate from five cents a gallon up to 12 and a half cents per gallon over a three-year period. And the way that rate increase was passed was resulting in about $1 million more revenue than we had estimated in our previous year's CIP, not knowing what rate increase we would go with. So, with that additional $1 million, in this year's CIP, we're putting up a $150,000 a year streetlight program for maintenance and improvements, and then a one-time trial project for a higher-quality betune surface treatment, a high-pressure slurry seal. And this is where we want to find a product that's a higher quality than the traditional oil and chip that we use, but is not as expensive as a hot-mixed asphalt resurfacing, something that can handle a little more traffic, is more durable than oil and chip. And actually, this HP slurry is also a less messy application, too. So, has some nice potential for some of our higher-volume roads, maybe in commercial areas, but still don't rise to that level of asphalt resurfacing project. We've been learning about this. It's not a, I say, it wouldn't be a conventional treatment method, but locations like, I said, other communities like Bloomington and Normal, Danville and Springfield have been using it with some success. So, we want to do a trial run to see how it plays out on our streets, measure, you know, the differences between it and the traditional method so we can compare the benefits with the higher cost.
Just one other thing to add with that is, part of that is also, it's less disruptive than other seal coat because the expectation that it's going to last longer. Traditional seal coats last three to seven years typically. This one is projected to last 10 to 12, so the disruption within the neighborhoods when this is happening is only happening on a 10- to 12-year cycle, hopefully in lieu of a three-to-seven-year cycle.
Okay, the Windsor Road trial, so this is the Windsor Road project that went from race to phyllo, was constructed back in, finished back in 2016. You know, it was a storied past with this project. Of course, there was a litigation that followed with the dispute with the contractor about some uncontrolled cracking that was happening in the pavement. Now, after the city was awarded damages, breach of contract, and some minor, you know, attorney fees with that, you know, take those revenues the city brought in, account for the attorney fees for the early maintenance that we had to do to the road because of the cracking, and because we had to return about a half-million dollars of federal money to IDOT. We netted $1.7 million to work with. And so, in the CIP, staff's recommending that we utilize this net revenue in the LMFT fund, and we prioritize the, you know, next maintenance work for Windsor Road, to be an asphalt overlay, the next recommended maintenance work for that road. Prioritize it in line with the other transportation capital projects we have. Score it side-by-side with the others like we would. And when we do that, as, you know, you may recall, there's a scoring matrix, scoring method, I guess, we have from up to 100, with 100 being a high priority project. And this asphalt overlay for Windsor Road scores about a 46. It's kind of middle of the road. There's, we were stacked up about $10 million of other projects that are higher priority in the backlog, so it's up there. We'll get to it eventually. But we recommend using this revenue to take care of the higher priority projects first so we can work our way down that list. And specifically, in this five-year outlay, that money from Windsor Road gets translated into a beefed-up asphalt overlay and resurfacing program. You'll see about $1.6 million more in that program than last year. So, some of the impacts of that is resurfacing to Broadway Avenue, coming from Elm, going north to Park Street. That will happen earlier than it was shown in the last CIP. And then, we're adding a couple of new segments on Main Street. The first one to hit would be from Vine to Weber, going east there, south of Chinooks, and then from Cedar to Walnut there, just on the west side of, kind of from the courthouse going west.
So, the Public Works Campus Improvements is kind of our next large facilities undertaking, based on the facility's master planning. Where we're at on that now is we have updated cost. The projection for FY '26 for this project is $7.7 million. This is up from $3.4 million, which has been the conceptual allocation that's kind of been inflated. It was an initial allocation back in 2020, and it's kind of been inflated through the construction costs increases through the years. And now, we're at a point, we're at schematic design now, where we have a well-defined scope, and we have a more defined, updated cost. The majority of these costs are still related to essential upgrades to the existing facility core components, the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, roofing, and structural. Some of the things that have come up through schematic design that are, we would consider additional scope is a need for fleet building expansion. The original intention, if you can see on that drawing, there's this Urbana storage facility that's next door to the primary Public Works building. The original intention was to remodel that for a modern fleet facility. Unfortunately, during the initial engineering investigations, it was found that there were structural limitations within that building that limited modifications that we could make to that building, making it impractical for those purposes. So, talking to our design team, they essentially recommended that we pursue pre-engineered metal building expansion more here on the east side of our existing building to accommodate those fleet services as lower cost than trying to either demo and replace in-kind there or reinforce structurally with probably still some impracticality with that current facility. That added a substantial amount of money to the project. I think we were estimating between a million and one and a half million dollars just for that. Site improvements, we're proposing to do some onsite salt storage as part of this as well to isolate and manage those services internally. There's coordination with the county and others that we've done for the past, I think, 20 or 30 years. The contract is coming to an end. That facility is probably going to be in need of some upgrades, and some of the coordination is just not as streamlined as it used to be. We have space to accommodate that here, and have proposed to do that as part of this as well. There's also some minor parking and traffic flow improvements that are going to be necessary due to that fleet expansion space that's going to take out some of that parking on the east side. Other improvements, security enhancements. Previously, this has kind of been slotted in as citywide improvements, but it makes more sense to just tackle that with this project dedicated at Public Works. It'll be coordinated, just as the access controls and things like that are happening here and at the fire stations as well. Other things is we're enlarging common spaces within the structure because part of the driving factor for this was bringing Arbor and Landscape staffing back from the Arbor shop that's located out on the, or the closed landfill. That facility is in need of an overhaul, and is probably more suitable for equipment storage, potentially for the LRC in the future. And also, the common spaces will accommodate some minor growth if we see it over the next 20 years. In addition to that, just some interior remodeling of the front office areas to really enhance the function. That has to do with some of the access controls and stuff coming into Public Works and customer service, as well as, you know, more functional meeting space and office space there. I guess one thing to point out on this, and I'll go into it a little bit more in the next detail, is with this, within the CR&amp;I fund, which is really our unrestricted dollars for our capital investments, once we complete this, you know, this is no additional bonding. We're bonding as part of the fire station projects. This is, you know, working within the allocations that we've projected through the five years, but once this is completed, we're going to have limited funding in future years within CR&amp;I for unrestricted capital projects, which, you know, that'll be kind of a thing for us to discuss in the next year or two to decide, do we want to look at other alternatives to increase funding for capital needs? It's always a balance of, you know, funding it internally, finding something externally, or deferring capital needs, and it really depends on the criticality of the projects as they rise through the years. The infrastructure asset management summary, this is really just kind of the high-level view of our infrastructure as a whole. I like to say, getting our arms around how big our stuff is and our problems are, and just kind of keeping that as a guiding light for where we're at and where we may be going. This is a generic slide I've shown for a couple of years, but how these things work together is really, an asset management plan would be kind of life cycle projections for, you know, an asset class of infrastructure, whether it's roads, sewers, whatever. Master plans are kind of those 10- to 20-year, bigger plans that are going to take, you know, long-term thought and dedication to get through. They're probably unfunded currently. And then, the capital improvement plans are really the five-year outlay for what we think we can fund in the next five years. An asset management plan, in our mind, is kind of all of these things tied in a bow, you know, inventory, you know, understanding what we have, valuing it, identifying the age and condition concerns with those things, identifying levels of service that the public desire, and whether we're meeting those or not, and if we, you know, optimizing whatever we can in that regard, comparing that to life cycle activities and costs. You know, we've talked about this HP slurry coat as, you know, another tool in our toolbox to see if we can buy more years or maintain a higher level of service for, you know, equal or lesser dollars type things. Risk, obviously, what is associated, you know, what is the risk of not doing these type of things? And then, how do we, what are the impacts from response and growth? So, when opportunities present themselves to us, or critical needs present themselves to us, how are we prepared to respond to those and accommodate growth if that's the direction the city chooses to go? From an asset breakdown, we break down our infrastructure assets into eight categories: Arbor and landscaping, bridges, facilities, light signals and signs, pavement, sidewalks, paths, sanitary sewers, and stormwater facilities. And good news, the big thing I want to highlight here is this is the first year since COVID that the National Highway Construction Cost Index has not increased by double digits. It's only went up about 6.5% over the past year. You know, we have recognized some of that in some of our bidding, you know. It remains to be seen what the stability of that will be right now, but for the past year or so, there's been a little bit of stability. I wouldn't hang my hat that it's going to stay there. I wouldn't, I don't think it's probably going down, but it's a nice change of pace since I've been here anyways, rather than seeing double-digit hikes year over year, so. The last one within the infrastructure asset management summary is really looking at our financial sustainability analysis. When we look forward through the five years right now, we're spending about 93% of, you know, what we would target to spend in a theoretical nature for our operations maintenance on all of our assets, which this aligns with a noticeable shift in the industry that people are spending more money on keeping things at a fair-to-acceptable level rather than funding capital, new capital projects or capital reconstruction. The strategy here is that it slows the decline of the network as a whole. The drawback of it is, if you're not funding certain capital things, there, you know, certain areas may just be, we may be kind of accepting that they're not going to be a higher level of service. They're going to be a low level of service for a number of years until they can be addressed or are critical enough to require being addressed. Similarly, we looked, and right now, over the five years, we're about 44% of the capital spending target. That's somewhat inflated because of all the money we've put into our public, or our public facilities in the last year and projected in the next year. I think, on average, that's probably more in like the lower 30s beyond that. That's just an indicator kind of, of what capacity do we have to deal with the capital that, you know, we're forecasting may come, and may become critical in the capital that, you know, we're forecasting may come and may become critical in, in the next five years. You know, it indicates a concern with long-term sustainability potentially, you know, it likely is going to require acceptance of lower quality infrastructure in some areas where we're going to be doing more operations and maintenance and less, we're not, we may not be jumping, moving the needle where we're making drastic improvements in some area, but we're not letting it drop. You know, and this is an increased risk for the city, you know, to be faced with large unplanned, time-sensitive capital expenses. We try to be as prepared as we can, we try to be proactive, but, you know, we're probably not going to sit with, you know, a huge bank account in the coffers. I mean, most people at home keep an emergency fund and things like that, you know, if something really critical comes up, but we're probably not going to be 100% funded in that at any point in time. But it's good to just kind of understand the nature of where the barometers are on a high level. You know, the takeaways are just that the limited unrestricted funds for capital in the next five years after the Public Works Campus Improvements, limited defined funding strategy outside of grants for the future capital needs. We have obviously done some rate hikes with the stormwater utility fees, with the local motor fuel tax, and, and those have really been kind of trying to get us, you know, improve that 93% O&amp;M spending targets. It does let us spend a little bit more capital in those areas, and we'll probably continue to have conversations around whether we need to do rate increases for long-term sustainability things versus other options. Obviously, grant funding is always the ideal scenario, but that and borrowing are two other financial mechanisms that we could consider. And one point, just from this, just the city has recognized benefits from, you know, kind of this high level of O&amp;M spending. In 2019, when the last, the previous pavement condition assessment was done citywide, we had kind of forecasted that we were going to be at a 53 area-weighted average by 2024, and our recent condition assessment came back in, and we're actually, we went from a 57 in 2019 to a 58 in 2024. It's good news, you know, over that time. You know, the bad news is we still are projecting that slow decline like we've discussed with the LMFT stuff. So as we go through these things, obviously, we'll continue to try to be strategic and innovative in any ways we can. And as long as we can extend lives and maintain levels of service, we'll do so, but it's expected that, you know, capital expenses will eventually come up again. They'll, they'll become more critical where we have to have conversations about money again. And I'm going to hand it back to John to kind of go through the project highlights. Sure. One thing, John's got a hand of kind of the project pages, and then I'm going to kind of fly you through our interactive map just to kind of demonstrate it for people. This is a good tool. We're hoping to continue to revise this year over year, potentially be in like a story map next year, if we, if we get our ducks in a row and, and have time for that. But I did want to just kind of demonstrate to people, you know, how to get there, how easy it is. You know, if you just Google Urbana CIP, it's the first link there. You can come down to the current fiscal year 25, or the next year's capital improvement plan, '26 through '28, '30, and then we've got the View project map right there. This has kind of got everything here, but we've got some nice filters over here on the right side to kind of help you navigate what you're really concerned with. You know, if you're, like, right now, we have it isolated to what's, what's kind of really in the fiscal year '26 stuff happening. You can filter it down by the asset class. You can search, you know. Oh, I've got the wrong search. You can search by the project name, if you have a specific project you want to, you want to look at, and it'll bring that up, and then you can see exactly where that's happening, and then you can get in here and zoom in and get more details on these type of things as well. But I will kind of fly around while John is walking you through some of the, the project details.
Yeah, and we'll want to, we'll go kind of quickly just to try to be respectful of people's time, but do feel free to interrupt if you want to ask questions or get into any one of these more detail. So I'm going to be going through on the handouts that I've got for you, and do apologize for anybody watching at home, because the slide numbers are a little different, off by one. But in your handout, going on slide 19, there's the list of the projects we're going to touch on tonight. And you can, yeah, that's good, Tim, thanks. So we're going to step through kind of what's happening now. So what's in construction or going to start in construction within the fiscal year '26. Just have a fairly large list there. And then we'll also talk on a couple of projects that are going to be in the studies or plans phase for fiscal year '26. Come back to a couple of projects that are pretty far along, and we're going to finish their construction in fiscal year '26, and then maintenance programs to round it out there at the end. All right, so you can go ahead and go to the map, Tim. So just turn on to the first project here is the Central TIFF demolition. It'd be a familiar project to the group. We've got three properties in the Central TIFF identified for demolition, in which, you know, we have the adult ed, the old adult ed center there on Race Street that is going to get, we're going to get underway with a contract here in the next month. We went ahead and had a pretty good bidding process, have a contractor selected. And so we have, of course, that was a fun site with a lot of site remediation and asbestos and all the gross stuff that comes with that, but we're, we're feeling good about getting that underway, getting that down later this year. We have the Urbana Civic Center over on Water Street, and that, of course, you know, has a potential for being perhaps a transit center, and that's, that's something that's in the works as well. So we'll be coordinating closely with MTD on the timing of that demolition, as they have some kind of like federal NEPA processes they're going through now. But we have, we have money allocated for FY '26 for that. It may not happen in FY '26 because of the process MTD's going through, but we'll be, we'll be ready for that. Then another location is what is currently the County Sheriff's Office and Jail there at the corner of Main and Vine. And this is, you still, you know, allocation in the future, details of this to be figured out, of course, all pending the timing of, you know, when the county is done with that facility. So we've allocated about $3 million out a couple of years in anticipation of that. All right, and then moving on, the next slide is for Colorado Avenue from Vine to Philo. This is an asphalt resurfacing project we've been talking about for a few years now. We had entertained the idea of doing a micro-fracturing, kind of a, an atypical rehabilitation method to try to get more of a deeper kind of rehabilitation of the pavement. We just, in our investigations, that found that was not going to be a desirable method for the urban setting we have here with all the various utilities we have. So we're doing a traditional mill and fill with the asphalt, using some fabric to, some pavement fabric to give it an extra oomph and tie it together for more durability, but feeling pretty good about this one. Got this, we're in process of awarding this contract now, so construction should be beginning within a month or so. All right, and then the next one is Springfield Avenue from Wright to McCullough. We've separated this project into two phases. In the first phase, we are getting under contract with, with a contractor to start that one soon. I know they're, they're anxious to get started on that. So we're going to start on the Kohler to McCullough stretch that goes over Boneyard Creek. It's going to be some bridge repair work over the creek and then some pavement work as well. Then the, the west section there from Wright to Gregory, we're going to time that to do bulk of the work within the U of I summer break next year, so we're going to get that out for bid this fall, get ready for that. That one's mostly a resurfacing project. I think at Goodwin, we're going to need to do some, do some more work, because that pavement needs more attention at that point. All right, Cunningham Avenue Streetlights, this is part of the Cunningham TIFF District, a fairly large investment we have. We identified a good need for upgrading the luminaires for the streetlights from Cunningham from university up to the interstate, upgrade them to LED for more energy efficiency. There's also a condition where the, a lot of the cables for the streetlights are just directly buried in the ground, not in a conduit, and so it's a condition we don't want to maintain. It's a, you know, can be a more of a hazardous condition for people doing utility digs or excavations, so we're going to be boring conduit in there and rewiring the cables and replacing light poles as the conditions warrant as well. And for with the, in general, for the TIFF four projects that we have are target right now, unless the TIFF were to be up, for it to be extended, but if it's not getting extended, we're trying to get all work obligated by the end of, the end of 2025 with work completed by the end of 2026. All right, and we're moving to the Baker's Lane and the Florida Avenue Shared Use Paths. We have, moving along with these projects, Baker's Lane is, is still going along in the same kind of schedule that we had. We're looking to get that out to bid this summer, maybe in July or August, and working, working closely with the Park District on the details here, we're coming up to what'd be like the pre-final plans, 90 to 95% complete. And so I've got a larger budget number in there for, for this project, but I know that the Park District is interested in also. We're going to look at, look at that closely to, you know, identify, you know, what's, what's the essential elements to it? How can we kind of trim this, trim this cost estimate back a little bit? So I'm looking forward to getting into that with the Park District here. And then the Florida Avenue Shared Use Path, they're going on the south side of Lincoln from, south side of Florida, excuse me, from Lincoln to Race. And we encountered some, some delays because the State Historic Preservation Office wants to evaluate what we're doing in front of the U of I President's House, I think, you know, soon to be the U of I Chancellor's House, because that's a historic structure, and so we're getting some extra steps that we have to go through, it's an extra process we have to go through. So we won't be ready to go to build that project yet this year. We're going to go to, go to bid probably in this coming winter for a spring construction, spring maybe into the U of I summer break as well. But it's, that's all fine with the ITEP grants we have, because they, we have at least a couple of years to even, I wanted to say it was April 2027, we had to get things under contract by, so we're, we're in good shape in that regard. We can touch on the Equity and Quality of Life Projects next. We have the, of course, the first EQL program, I'm calling it the Fiscal Year '22 EQL Program, with constructions wrapping up this fiscal year. We had the sidewalks were constructed last calendar year, and then the streetlights, we've got all the conduit installed. The light poles and luminaires themselves are just getting delivered last week and this week, so we should be seeing those getting installed in the coming month. So looking forward to, you know, the positive change that that will make in these neighborhoods as well. Now, but for the, the next EQL cycle, the, called the Fiscal Year '25 Program, like, like we've discussed, I think back in February, we talked about this, how it's going to be focused in the Silverwood neighborhood with additional street lighting installed and some targeted sidewalk improvements, some curb ramps getting improved and improving it with some, filling in some gaps in the sidewalk network, especially there on Harding and Vauder. And we also have some traffic calming measures at, on Broadway, Cottage Grove, and on Kerr Avenue. There's going to be a, a small part of this EQL program as well. So we're getting design going on the FY '25 Program, hoping to get started on construction later this calendar year. All right. Take a breath for a second. Everybody's still awake. Looks good, okay. All right, we're moving on to the Country Club Road and Perkins Road Project. This one, we've been moving along pretty good. We're getting design close to done. We were just getting some good coordination with Ameren, because there's a gas main, and some tall utility poles near where we want to put a new storm sewer. So just, we're making sure we got that location accurately identified, so we could thread the needle and get that new storm sewer placed. Looking to go to bid early fiscal year '26 with this, so it'll probably be a project that starts this year and then goes into 2026 as well. Let's see, move on to the Public Works Campus Improvement Project. Tim touched really on the details of that, pretty in-depth, and so we just have, and you'll see it in the CIP broken into, taking a couple of small projects as a spin-off, the LRC Facility Improvements. After we move the, you know, Arbor Division into the Glover Campus, we still have LRC staff out at the, out at the old landfill to make sure we get better facility, you know, upgraded for them as well. Okay, the Florida Avenue Wright to Hillcrest Project. I touched on this a little bit earlier in the presentation about how it's, the Race Grant really is just changing how we're planning to package this project. Now, we'll say, you know, you're thinking to yourself, you know, what if we don't get the Race Grant? At what point do we need to change what we're doing with this project? So, you know, worst-case scenario, that happens. We're still working our way through design. We're in the study phase right now, where we're doing things like intersection design studies and getting any design criteria passed through IDOT, federal highways, and then moving into construction documents. That'll be a contract we start in FY '26. And so as we get into construction documents, that's where we're going to have to decide, is it going to be one contract, one bid package, or is it going to be multiple bid packages? So we've got some time there. It's going to be probably later in 2025, maybe early 2026, when we have that decision point. And I'd say we have been moving along. We've started to have coordination meetings with the federal highways, getting into the nuts and bolts about which criteria we're using for the intersections and truck turning movements and all that stuff. So things are moving along pretty well. This project is also impacted by the Historic Preservation Office's review of potential impacts to the U of I President's House. So it's kind of, that and the shared use path are both going through, is going to have to go through the same kind of historic review process, although the timeline for this larger street project can, can absorb that pretty easily. All right, and then the Lincoln Avenue Washer to Killarney Project. So we have the, project is looking at, we're looking at a one-year-later construction compared to last year's CIP because of how the, the COATs, federal funds are shaking out. There won't be, won't be enough funds available for this project until fiscal year '28, which we still have to do our, do our diligence of applying for it through COATs, because COATs has their own kind of project selection process. And so we'll put this one forward and request funding for it for construction through the, through the regional, you know, through the Metropolitan Planning Organization there. And of course, we've been, we've talked to you a couple of times about the Road Diet Demonstration we have in the works. The SS4A Grant, also a federal grant, is also on hold for now. We're continuing with design on the overall project, preparing for Road Diet Demonstration. Now, if that grant doesn't come through, we will have to, you know, stop and think about if that Road Diet Demonstration is something we want to do without the grant or not, and I think it'd be something we'd be, you know, glad to come to council about, have that conversation of the pros and cons of doing it without grant funding possibly. So it's not, hasn't happened yet, so we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
I was just going to say one more thing on this. I know Hope Center, the food pantry up in that area, had some concerns over this. Myself and Justin Swinford, our Assistant City Engineer, met with them a couple of different times, kind of game planning, you know, operational changes, you know, they've got, they've just grown immensely over the years. They themselves are having capacity issues with some of what they're doing now, and they're, they're looking at long-term, you know, changes, whether that's at the site or somewhere else. But in the interim, they've been very collaborative with us in working on options. The intent, we actually just got an email this morning from Marty Pearson with Hope Center, you know, indicating that their intention is to start some operation modifications in preparation for this in May, and have kind of just requested, like, we may need some other volunteers for this. The local National Guard had indicated they would be The local National Guard had indicated they would be interested and willing. You know, she reached out to me and, and will certainly help and assist wherever we can with that stuff as well. But they have been very open and collaborative for both the short-term and the long-term solutions.
Nice, and we'll move on to the next slide, is on Fire Stations Number Two, Number Three. Yeah, so hard not to notice these structures coming up, they're on Bradley Avenue's Number Three, by Bradley and Goodwin, and then over there on Philo and Mumford, Station Number Two. The, you know, building's coming along well, we're getting into, making sure we have the fits and finishes and the, the equipment coming along as well. And so looking at probably the end of the third quarter this year, we should be seeing those, the construction completed, getting those stations outfitted. So we do have, and we do have some money for demolition, Fire Station Number Three, coming up in fiscal year twenty-six. And that's the one that's located there on Lincoln Avenue. But, yep, no problem, projects are moving along as planned right now.
Yeah, the Bradley one is about a month and a half in front of the Philo Run. So if you do, or someone like me, I drive by the Philo one every day, and I know where it's at, and I know the other one is slightly ahead, so I try to go up and check it out periodically. But it should be done, I think, in the summer, and then the, the Philo one will trail probably about a month, a month and a half behind that.
Well, and close to where Tim is right now, we'll talk about the Sanitary Sewer Lateral Lining Pilot Program. This is the ARPA-funded project in the Dr. Ellis neighborhood. And, you know, really have to applaud Charisse and Dr. Reverend Underwood for their efforts because we've been having some really great participation from the neighborhood. I know our staff as well, Carmen Franks and Adam Shaw, have been doing a great job reaching out to the residents as well, but, so this is a project has one hundred and forty-four properties that have some connection to our sanitary sewer. And we've had one hundred and thirty-one properties consent to do the inspection phase, that first phase. We have over ninety percent participating in this project, which is, is really wonderful. I, I would venture to say that would be hard to replicate in other parts of the city. Because, you know, we're, people have to agree to say, hey, you're going to come into my, my yard, my, you know, private property and do stuff. And we also have a great participation in Phase Two, which is improvements that are coming out from those inspections. So it could be lining their sewer lateral, could be spot repairs on it, cleanouts added, or whatever is warranted based on the inspection. So one hundred and nine properties out of the one hundred and forty-four are, have consented to participate in that Phase Two as well. So we're moving forward with this as well, we're getting a, a small contract together for the spot repairs and get that done and move along with the lining coming up soon.
I just want to also say, just, this is an unprecedented coordination effort with this many singular, singular individual properties and this level of participation that it takes. I just want to, you know, commend Charisse, commend Dr. Underwood, Dr. Reverend Underwood, as well as the community, as well as our staff that have been involved in this, because it's taken a lot to just get to this point.
You can give yourself some applause too, because I really do appreciate the cultural sensitivity that, that the Public Works has had regarding getting this project started and getting it going and keeping it going, actually. You know, finding the nights that are most convenient for people to show up for public information and all that, and you've done an excellent job with working with me, working with, with Dr. Underwood and other, there are other, other people, Melinda Carr, you know, just trying to, so that we could coordinate, even when we're not coordinating. We just kind of talk to each other from time to time and say, well, did you get this person? Did you get this person? And Dr. Underwood has really been, for this, the last couple of months, she's been a driving force too, for, for trying to get as many people signed up as possible. And I just appreciate the patience, because we're starting up people still for the first, the televising. I'm, I'm still, you know, teaching the lesson of how important this is to some people in my neighborhood. So I appreciate you doing all of this, thank you.
Thank you. And those are the capital projects, and we'll step into a few, the kind of larger maintenance programs real quick. This will largely be familiar to you, council, just kind of a quick review. And nothing much to look at in the map, so we can probably just jump back to the presentation. So for the sewer cleaning and televising, it's our bread and butter of, you know, maintenance cleaning and doing a condition inspection of our sewer pipes, both the storm and sanitary. For a major part of utilizing the increased stormwater utility fee that we've been getting is to do like a double allocation of this sewer cleaning and televising on the storm sewer system. So we're filling in our data gaps, and we're going to have a full assessment of our sewer condition so that we can better plan forward and identify our actual, our specific needs that we have. And then for the sanitary sewer, we don't have the same kind of fund, you know, increase as with the storm sewer. What we're doing is we're supplementing the systematic cleaning and televising that our staff does. So our staff, sewer crew, is doing systematic clean televising for one of our ten zones every year, and then we're going to supplement that with some contract work. So by the end of FY29, we've kind of caught up and we have the full data set. And then, starting in fiscal year thirty, we'll just go to a regular ten-year cycle. So it'll be just a smaller amount in the sewer, storm sewer budget, and then we won't have a contract work in the sanitary fund.
Just another thing to just prep you guys for here is, we, we've kind of done this graduated stormwater utility fee over a five-year span to be able to implement, close the condition gaps and the data gaps on the stormwater side, and a joint effort between internalizing and externalizing these services on the sanitary sewer side. The sanitary sewer side is probably a fee we'll, we'll want to review in the coming year to just kind of look and prepare for what we need to do, especially if we want to try to take some incremental steps in lieu of taking really big steps. So that's probably something in the coming year I'll come back and talk to you about a little bit more, just to kind of share a little bit more about it and get some feedback on, on where we're at with that. There are, we're, we're beginning to identify some larger-type projects that it would be in our, our probably best interest to be prepared to fund some portion of, if not the entirety, to facilitate capacity issues that we have in some areas of the city. So that is something just related to this, that we're, we're working kind of on closing those data gaps in the sanitary system tangentially to the, what we're doing with the storm system, to properly identify that. And we're, we are seeing some of these capital projects emerge as we're doing these inspections that we need to start planning for.
Before you switch real quick, Tim, the, so just draw your attention again to how in FY30, the allocation for the storm cleaning and televising drops to about half of what it was previous years. And then if you go to the next slide, we'll talk about the, the lining, which is the, you know, the rehabilitation method for, that works for in many cases in our sewers. And then you'll see in, going across the five-year plan, in FY30, the storm sewer lining allocation jumps up quite a bit as, you know, we kind of get done with that double, double effort on the cleaning and televising, and let's shift those funds over to this rehabilitation with the expectation that the more inspection data we have for our pipes, the more, you know, candidates we have for lining that we have in front of us. And so, you know, as a kind of rule of thumb, or, you know, back of the envelope calculation, if we look at all of our sewers, and to line the ones that aren't lined over a fifty-year period, it would take about one point four million dollars a year for storm sewers and under a million dollars for sanitary, which again, that's the back of the envelope, but the benefit of getting all that inspection data is we will know better what, what our actual need is, not just the theoretical need. All right, and then the Batumina Surface Treatment Program, which has our oil and chip program, with our oil and chip treatment in it, and this is what we were talking about earlier, about incorporating a high-pressure slurry seal, at least a trial period for it in this fiscal year. And then one thing we're doing with the increased locomotive fuel tax is to step up this program to the six hundred thousand dollar annual allocation, which it's meant to cover all the eligible streets that are currently getting treated with this method and that are eligible to be converted to this method as well. So this will be a pretty full program going forward. And then the Asphalt Overlay and Resurfacing, this is the program I talked about, where we're talking about the Windsor Road net revenue, which, we're going to be starting this program about a year earlier with that extra revenue. And you can see in the FY27 and FY28 allocations, there are a million dollars. Compare that with FY29, FY30, kind of moving forward, more of a, more of a sustainable annual allocation would be about five hundred thousand dollars. And that can buy about four thousand to five thousand square yards of overlay and resurfacing, depending on how thick the, the resurfacing is. But this is where we're going to, and based on our priority scoring system, what really came, came up to the top were projects in, near the core of the city, Main Street and Broadway. And these are, these are roads that they've, you know, within the last twenty years, they've been converted to complete streets, they have bike lanes on them. We feel like that's a, a cross-section that's been evaluated, been working pretty well, so we're just going in with more of a maintenance approach of, let's just get this pavement back to a good condition. We're not going to go do this big design study about it, just kind of keep it moving the way it is right now, so. That is, those are all the projects we had. Wanted to just, threw up some names there, as a lot of people get involved with this. And if any partner organizations saying, hey, you haven't talked to me yet, said, yes, I have not yet, because I'm going to during this one-month period. But getting, definitely get good coordination from our partner agencies on these. So, that's all we've got. Is there any questions or anything we'd like to discuss?
Any, James, go ahead.
So I'm going to go way back to the beginning and ask about the onsite salt storage. So a long time ago, there was an expectation that the county would build this big salt dome, and it would save everybody time, money to have one place to store the salt. What I heard was, that's not working out to be true anymore, from a, from a saving standpoint.
Yeah, so the, the thirty-year, I think it's a thirty-year agreement, is, it's coming to term now. We expect there's going to be some, you know, advanced rehabilitation and things with that. Additionally, it's just, it's proven to be kind of a heavy coordination for us to manage the salt in the past few years. Some of the terms of that contract have not necessarily changed, but how people are acting with those are, we've had instances where salt gets, or if someone orders their entirety of salt and, and consumes the space, and then we're trying to piecemeal and figure out how much certain people have brought in. We still need to get it, but there's not capacity to bring in our stuff. So we did a little bit of research, and we felt that we could probably do something on our site that's of scale for our operation to manage independently at a reasonable cost.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mary Alice?
I have a lot of questions, I'll, I'll start with a couple. So, so my first question is, and you've gone over it again, but thinking about the federal funds for Florida, if that does go through, you had said Vine Street would be moved up. Can you list out the other items that would have been moved up?
That, you're saying with the RACE Grant?
If we get the, if it, if we continue to have the RACE Grant, which projects would be moved up in timeline?
You know, this may be the, the nerdy way to do it, but Tim, would you mind going to the website and pulling up this, the fund report? Because that spreadsheet, it's the easiest way for me to, to show it, I think. Yeah, if you click on the PDF there, yep. It's, the Lincoln Avenue Florida Green is the other one, Mary Alice, is the one that we've been doing the corridor study with recently, to where, in last year's CIP, the, the construction funding, yes, state motor fuel tax, yep, there you go. So the, the line down, the gray line down there with three point seven million dollars in the farthest year, that one is the Lincoln Avenue Florida Green, and that one was not even going to show up. That construction wasn't, that's a Phase One of Two for that construction. RACE Grant helps that show up within the five-year plan. The Vine and Illinois Street, that's coming about a year earlier for both phases. It's still, we're still doing it in two phases, but it's coming a year earlier for both phases, where I think previously the first phase was going to be FY27, and the other one was going to be spaced out like two years later, I think. And then that, that last line down there is the Vine and, Vine from Florida to Washington, and that's the, the new project, had it in there as well, so. Hey, you've done this before.
No, I was like, there's got to be.
Thank you.
So, so the, the study that's been done on Lincoln Avenue, that wasn't even on our CIP in terms of when it would be done?
The construction wasn't, we had the design going.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
But the construction at the moment, if the RACE Grant goes through, wouldn't start until fiscal year thirty. Is that correct?
And that's a better scenario.
It's a, it's a better scenario, all right.
So this is a good illustration, because these three, these three projects here, if the RACE Grant gets, you know, if it gets reduced in, in the award amount or eliminated, these three would be affected directly.
Perfect.
And they'd slide down the time scale, yep, yep.
All right. My next question is, so Windsor Road. The reason that we were in litigation with them is because the road was constructed not correctly, right? Which means that it would deteriorate faster. So my question to you is, I know that you said that you would put them on the regular analysis file in terms of the condition of the pavement. Does that take into consideration the original poor construction?
Kind of.
Well, I think you're giving us too much credit, that our, our scoring system doesn't really predict, like, the deterioration, you know, rate of these different pavements. I would say, like, we've invested some money upfront in pavement patching and early crack ceiling, which is going to help slow that deterioration.
So, yeah, and I just brought this up just to show as an example, is, you know, knee-jerk reaction, we go do Windsor Road, so our, the pavement firm that helped us through the trial developed basically what is a more advanced aggressive maintenance schedule? So instead of maybe doing fifteen-year overlays, we're targeting ten-year, a ten-year overlay, and we have to do, we need a higher budget for patching year over year, and we need to do crack and joint sealing more frequently because of the uncontrolled cracks that are happening to reduce impacts from freeze and thaw in those unreinforced, uncontrolled cracks now. We still intend to do, you know, all of the joint and crack sealing type stuff with our other programs that we're trying to do more strategically throughout the city. The answer is, in terms of condition and criticality right now, Windsor Road's condition doesn't warrant the resurfacing as much as some of these other ones currently. We think that we could put that off some time and still come back to it, and it could still be at a high level of condition. Whereas if we don't prioritize some of these other ones, what are the ones that jumped up? John, Broadway, is that one of them?
Yeah.
Broadway was one, and as you can see, I, I just wanted to bring this up to just demonstrate, if we stack them against each other, Broadway is a seventy, whereas the Windsor Road in its current condition is a forty-six, where we could go do that, and we're kind of doing it maybe prematurely in comparison to our other critical needs.
How, how have you incorporated the additional requirements in order to maintain condition on Windsor into the CIP?
I, so you're talking about how to maintain that condition based on, like, what the expert witness, you know, like testified to?
Well, Tim was saying that there's additional measures that we could take to prolong the lifespan of it. So I, I guess I'm trying to figure out how we incorporated that into the CIP.
So, I, I would just say, those are typically what's going to be happening with those, they're less, they're more of those preventative maintenance type things or reactive maintenance things. So we're- So, we're, we have a joint and crack sealing program annually. What we'll do is, on an annual basis, is we're going to review that, and if Windsor Road needs joint and crack sealing sooner, and needs to be, let's say it needs to be involved in the program two years from now rather than five years from now, we would do that within that preventative maintenance program. We would prioritize joint and crack sealing, just like we do our other capital improvements. The joint and crack sealing will be critical for Windsor Road because of all of the new cracks and joints, so that will be part of that preventative maintenance program that will evaluate annually within that program. As well as, we have pavement patching as another kind of more reactive maintenance thing that we keep up with, where we did some of this early on Windsor Road, we did about $100,000 of patching where we had uncontrolled cracking, and we had failures that were more critical to vehicle damage, things like that, that we wanted to go out and address. And that's kind of what we do with our pavement patching program, is we have an allotment of money for pavement patching annually, and our engineering and our streets operations division work together to kind of identify, like, where are the most critical areas for us to complete patching this year. So, we would just kind of review that within that program annually to see, does, do we need to do some spot repairs on Windsor for patching? Do we need to get out there to start doing joint and crack sealing because, you know, the joint and crack sealing wears away, you know, over time? But we would just evaluate annually within those programs.
So, that wouldn't show up here in the CIP?
It does, it's just generic, it's more generic.
Right.
It's like, this is our $500,000 for joint and crack sealing, and this is, and that's not the right number.
Characterizes maintenance rather than a capital project, per se.
I just could assume that if we have to do it more frequently on Windsor, that that maintenance program amount would need to be increased, if we're not putting it here in these kind of large-scale projects.
Yeah, and it may or may not. I mean, right now, we, you know, use some kind of high-level estimates based on typical life expectations of joint and crack sealing, you know, industry standard recommendations for PCC concrete pavements, is that your joint and crack sealing on about a 10-year cycle, you may have to do some intermittent in-between there, which, if we have small areas, let's say we go out and find 10 new uncontrolled cracks out there, we have an operations staff that could go out and do some of that on a smaller scale, versus if we go out there and all of the joint and crack sealing, the sealant is all peeling out of everything, we need to do the whole thing, that's something we would address within that program. And I was trying to, there's our maintenance program for patching, so we've got about $300,000 a year, kind of as an arbitrary number to hold for patching. If we have more or less, we can kind of ramp that up and down a little bit, but it has to be in consideration with our other maintenance programs that we're doing. Is joint and crack sealing around there?
Other way.
Other way, sorry. So, then, our joint and crack sealing program, got about $190,000 right now, and this is a reflection, just to dive a little bit deeper into this, the city has not done a bunch of joint and crack sealing in past years, and this is another one of, we're trying to play catch-up and do better of this. So, we are actually, the FY '25 through '27, we are contracting out a large portion of this to address that, and we're also doing an internal project of slightly smaller scale to kind of help transition that, you know, potentially here by FY '28. That may be that we're just purchasing materials in FY '28 and managing all of it in-house, but we're trying to bulk that up, because it hasn't, it's kind of been deferred for a number of years.
All right, I'll hold off on the remaining of my questions.
Grace?
Thanks for the movie version of this. I was wondering about the Public Works Campus, the newer expanded building. You're talking about expanding on the main, kind of office-y building for, did you say a vehicle repair kind of?
Yeah, so, the original intent with, when they performed the facilities master plan stuff, was, we have, our current equipment service maintenance facilities are pretty crammed for the scale and size of equipment that we manage nowadays. They're more suited for pickup trucks and passenger vehicles, and if a fire truck comes in, if you come to Public Works, it takes up the entire drive-through bay area to work on, because it doesn't fit in the mechanics bays to work on them there. So, the intent at the time was that the storage facility at 704 Glover, just north of the main Public Works building there, that was, the intent was, we were going to re-renovate that whole thing into the fleet services area, and when our design team came in and did an analysis of this structure, there, it lacks reinforcement throughout, so there's not a ton of modifications that can be made that are not extremely costly.
So, that building to the north is where you currently do all that work, right?
Actually, we currently do it here, that building is really just a, it's storage, we've got some-
Further, further?
Oh, that, that's our new citywide storage we built like two or three years ago, and that house is, about a third of it is fire, about, or sorry, two-thirds of it is fire, a third of it is police, and the other half is Public Works, large equipment storage areas. The one that says Urbana Storage Facility is an existing building that's been there for decades, that we wanted to repurpose, but because of the structural integrity issues, it's probably just going to remain storage. And the recommendation was, if you look here, this white building on the east side, that was an expansion of the Public Works Building at one point, the intention is really to kind of further expand that out across the parking area to the east there, and that would accommodate fleet services in lieu of the Urbana Storage Facility that's shown on this map.
Thank you. And another somewhat random question was about, how much does clearing leaves from street drains help with our sewer drain stuff, and is that something we should tell people about more?
For sure, we should always encourage people to do that. I mean, we invest in two city sweepers that run nearly continuously throughout the year, except in the winter seasons, just for those type of things. Keeping debris out of the sewers helps preventing blockages, preventing, you know, water quality contamination issues downstream. People doing that, certainly, we would always promote that, we do always promote that, that's in a lot of our brochures for stormwater management and whatnot. You know, I don't think, I don't know that we have like a formal adopted drain thing, but we do encourage that type of stuff.
Thank you.
Any other questions? James?
I have one more question about the scoring-
Sure.
-tool that we're using. You may recall that I asked some questions about Anderson Road, which at one point was scoring high enough to be on the plan and has gradually fallen further and further off the list. And the thing I noticed tonight, when we were looking at this, was that this safety column, the safety score, is something that I, it looks like some roads will never bubble into the things we need to do next, if the safety score is zero. So, I'm a little bit curious about the safety score and how we come to that, and is that how, was that something we added? Is that the reason why Anderson fell off the radar a couple of years ago? Because I remember, rescored is what dropped it out of the next plan thing. Now, it's still barely on there, but it's got a zero for safety, so there's no safety risk in the condition that Anderson is in right now? Is that the implication?
These are really great questions, James, I'll do them one at a time. So, the history of how Anderson found itself in the backlog was because it was, the original concept was it was getting bundled up with the Philo, the Colorado segments as well, and as we got into the investigations of these streets, and we found that, like, if we were able to just straight-up resurface Anderson, then we would have kept it in the program probably, but the pavement's such bad condition, it was not going to make sense for us to just resurface it. And so, we were at the higher cost of rebuilding it or some deeper rehabilitation method, that's what bumped it out of that project, and so then it got scored individually, before it was getting scored with those other streets, and that's why it was up there in that, in the CIP before. The, the safety metrics came to us, RPC did a study for us for last year's CIP, where they did a statistical analysis of the crash records, and that's really where the safety score comes from, is it's looking for street segments or intersections where the severity and rate of crashes, you know, is statistically higher than the average. And so, when you've got street segments intersections that are average or below average, they don't get that safety score. And so, that's where that metric comes from.
But it's not related at all to road condition.
Correct, it's independent of road-
So, if it's not a signalized road, it might not have the, I mean, it's just got four-way stops, it's not going to have the safety issues that a place with a traffic light might have, or-
It's, you know, it's going to be driven by traffic volumes, of course, but, I mean, there's straight sections of roadway away from intersections that do have bad crash records as well.
I guess I'm just concerned that in the long run, if there isn't like a, how long have we let this be this bad kind of factor, these, I call them tertiary roads, that are, that are also still kind of important for getting around, are just always going to be off the list.
Yeah.
So, I just don't understand how they will ever rise to the level that they get attention.
And I think that's a really good way to, it's a really good way to try to poke holes in this scoring system, where I'm not going to say that I'm in love with it myself, like, I know it's not a perfect system. We have, our intention is to change over to a different scoring system that can be more universally applied to all of our assets, and there's a, oh, I'm really going to go out on them here, it's like a triple baseline method, that is, I wanted to say it was published by the EPA, that talks about risk in different buckets. Our new asset management software that we're using, OpenGov, Cartograph is the name of it, we're using to map and keep track of our assets, infrastructure assets, where it has this built-in risk scoring method that I think is going to be really beneficial, but it's still going to depend on what kind of data we have readily available to us. But I think, James, you're asking good questions that, you know, that's how we have to continue to, you know, critically look at these methods, is like, this street segment, you know, we know it's important, when is this method ever going to score it? To be there, you go.
Yeah, I'm sure there are examples like this in other parts of the city. I just hear about Anderson, because some people saw, hey, we're going to get Anderson repaved, and now we're not, and I can't tell them when.
Yes, I understand.
And I think that that, you know, from our stance, you know, we're trying to be as objective as we can about this building, these things, so if there are things that don't feel right to you, like, we ultimately still rely on you, the public, to gut-check these things, to say, does this feel right, that Anderson's out and something else is in? Or do we want to, if it's a prerogative of the council and the community to fund more things that are below this backlog, that could be a conversation as well.
I've just got one question, Mary Alice, and then I'll let you have at it. So, thank you for the presentation. The question I want to ask is the one that I get bombarded with every month, and that is, when are you going to fix these potholes? And so, Tim, what is the definitive answer to that?
So, the definitive answer, which is fun, is that with our new work and asset management program, we're actually tracking our responsiveness to that type of stuff. Now, this is in its infancy since the beginning of this year, but right now, most potholes that are reported to us are fixed within seven days currently, about 80%. The target is to keep getting better, to a point that, you know, our means and methods are so streamlined that we're doing those in a day or two days. Additionally, we also address a ton of things that are not addressed reactively, not reported to us with systematic pothole patching, which typically, we wait until we kind of feel that we're comfortably out of the snow season to go and start doing that, because it's going to get ripped up if we have snowplows out again. So, we're getting to that time of year, we're probably going to be hitting it pretty hard in the next month or so, the weather's breaking hopefully, and we're going to be out there, you're going to see people doing a lot of that in the next month. That's kind of our annual, like, coming into spring type stuff, winter is over, let's go address all of the freeze-thaw issues that have occurred, you know, with an interim solution with the potholes. That also queues us up with like those annual pavement patching programs to say, you know, a standard pothole patch here is not going to hold, like, we can do that now, but we need to have a plan to maybe address that, you know, in a greater capacity. But, yeah, the short answer is, in the next month, we'll probably be doing a lot of that out there and report them to us. Right now, we're pretty reactive, like I said, about 80% are getting done within a week. I want to see that keep growing, and hopefully, in the next year or so, we'll have fun statistics and reports to share with you on all of that type of stuff.
Thank you for that update. If it's not already on your radar, the section of Lincoln near Vet Med, anybody who's trying to bring their animal to the emergency clinic is going to have a bumpy road right now, so. Sharice.
Oh, and I'll say right now too, Jay, that I don't love being a not-my-problem kind of guy, but that's actually a U of I stretch a road. So, be sure to give facilities and services a call.
Thanks for sharing that.
You bet.
That kind of segues into what I was getting ready to say, because my ward, a lot of the streets, I'm not quite sure what is in the county, what is county and what is Ward Three. And I have driven through my ward, and especially over by Cunningham Children's Home, there are streets there that, where that really need, are in need of repair, if not some kind of mitigation of the very deep potholes, and I don't, they don't seem to have sidewalks, I don't know exactly, though, what part of that is my ward and what part of that is county. So, all I'm asking, while I have your attention right here, is for someone to check into that, if that is, and to see if, and to do some scoring on those side streets that are just east of Broadway, and going from probably Country Club Road down to Kerr, that I, they, those streets could really use some repair.
Yeah, that's a, you know, you're definitely right on, Sharice, that's an area that has some serious problems with the pavement and with drainage. And, yeah, the city boundary does dance around quite a bit. We have, as an example, I'll give two examples, Thompson Street, which is a two-block street from Broadway to Division, you know, we have, the city boundary goes down the middle of it, and so it's a kind of a shared jurisdiction there. We've been aware of a very bad drainage problem on the east end of that street for some time, and we're designing a solution and just kind of haven't pulled the trigger yet, as we're kind of figuring out how to fit that into our funding, you know, that we have. It's a fairly low priority street, but the drainage is very bad. And then, Country Club Road itself, between Broadway and say like Tom Powell, that is also a township road, fully a township road, and there's definitely a lot of drainage problems in there, and to which we are thinking, we're thinking ahead about that, you know, right now, it's not a, per se, you know, city of Urbana ownership or issue, but we've done a drainage study with our recent Kendrick, Gordon, Perkins design project to see like what kind of a storm sewer would go down that street, you know, if it were to be sewed one day. And so, you know, we have some coordination with township about this, they definitely are aware of the problems, and so we'll continue to try to do what we can on the boundaries here. But, yeah, you bring up a good point, Sharice.
Thank you. Mary Alice, back to you.
All right, thank you. I have two burning questions, and then I'll leave the small ones off. My first question is, is the county jail. So, my question is, why is the city of Urbana demolishing it? For $3 million, I think, is what it was?
I want to say that that was a stated purpose of the Central TIF District, but I think there are others here probably more qualified than me to answer that.
That is one of the allowed uses of TIF money, and frankly, a big part of why we would want to make that investment is so that we can have some say about the outcome of what that site is going to be redeveloped into.
So, is the county then giving us the land?
I mean, ideally, yes. There's no agreement to that effect, but I would say if they would like the money from the TIF, then we need to come to some kind of understanding.
Okay. Okay, but we're, I guess I'm concerned if it's not a city-owned property and we're spending TIF dollars, which I recognize come from multiple different taxing bodies, without any kind of agreement with the county in terms of what we're going to be doing with that, it seems a little awkward.
I agree with you. What I was trying to say is, we would not make that investment of $3 million to demolish without having some kind of agreement that allows us involvement in the redevelopment of that site.
Would it be possible in the SIP to put something like an asterisk or something so that we know, I mean, if none of us are here in three years or whatever, and somebody's like, oh, yeah, we agreed to demolish this for $3 million? Well, not necessarily.
That's a good point.
That's a great point. And I'll, there's a couple of the projects that talked about, like, we expect to get grant funding, you know, out here. I think you've put a similar note like this one, like pending agreement with the county or some, something like that. So, yeah, thank you.
And I would assume that something like that would come to city council for input from council and the public. Okay. And then my last question is a bit more general, but help me tell the public why it costs one over a million dollars to construct a sidewalk on Florida.
Well.
I mean, is it, do we have to, you know, buy easements? Like, why, why is it a million dollars?
That is, that is the cost of construction today.
For, I think, is it eight feet? What is the?
It's a 10-foot wide.
10-foot wide?
Path, yep. And now, what we're going to do with this project is going to get built, and that's going to get conveyed to the university so that the city is not going to have to maintain it after it's built. Now, the university does have a fairly high standard for their sidewalks, so it's a beefier sidewalk than normal, but that's a marginal cost difference. It's largely, you know, the scale of construction costs these days.
And that goes over one, two, three, four, five, five or six blocks roughly? What is that, a third of a mile?
Sounds right.
And is that typical, that it costs about a million dollars for a third of a mile for sidewalks?
I'd say that's reasonable. I mean, comparable to our, you know, the EQL project, which, I'm going to blank on the exact cost of it, but it was, it was definitely over a million dollars for sidewalk in different parts of the city that were probably totaled up to similar lengths.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Mary Alice, you made me think of some other questions. I get, no, no, it's good. And I'll, this will be my last. The decision to demolish the jail, this has been a pet peeve of mine since 2011. There's no reuse, repurpose for that building? Because it looks from the outside that it could last another 300 years. So how bad is the downtown jail? That can't be saved?
I mean, just my opinion on it is, if it's going to be reused as a jail, it probably could. I don't think there's a lot of other uses that jails are suitable for, for redevelopment typically.
Okay. And then my last question is, just to be clear, all the demo projects, the adult, the brand adult center, the jail, the.
Civic Center.
Civic Center. All that is, we demolish it in the hopes that someday, somehow, a private developer or the MTD will take it over? Is that, we're just kind of clearing it for hopeful development someday, some way, right?
Correct.
Nothing planned, is what I'm saying, other than the MTD possible transportation.
So like, for the, for the adult ed center, like, there's going to follow, there'll be a request for proposals for development, you know, basically we'll sell it, you know, or offer it up for development. And I think that the adult ed site serves as a really good example, I think, of, this is the city, we are providing a service to the community because this is a garbage site. Like, and I mean, there's no disrespect to the school district or anything. There's, you know, dry clean chemicals, environmental contamination that need to be dealt with. There's asbestos in the building. Like, this is not an attractive site from cleanup perspective. Now, we get that cleaned up, you know, clear sight, you know, green sight, then that may be more attractive to developers. It's still going to have some things they have to deal with environmentally, but it'll be a lot less. So, this is, this is, just my personal opinion, I feel like that's a really good use of the TIF dollars.
I would characterize it as we're eliminating barriers to development in our city.
Yeah.
Sharice?
With, with that in mind, John, does that mean that demolition of that particular building is going to cost more than demolition of the other buildings? I mean, or will that, having to get rid of asbestos and, and particular chemicals and stuff?
Yeah, that made the cost higher.
Does that possibly increase the cost of that demolition?
Substantially.
Yeah, I mean, thankfully, the bid came in under our estimate, so we're, we're prepared for it. But, yes, it was definitely more expensive because of those cleanup measures.
Okay. And regarding the sheriff's, the jail, I guess, I don't know if I'm thinking of the correct building, because the jail that I was thinking of, I thought it had been basically condemned, or am I thinking of the correct one?
On Main and Vine, yeah.
Okay. So, I don't know if repurposing it is something we want to do. That's all I'm saying. I mean, it'd probably make a nice club, and we could call it the jail. But I'm just saying, I don't know if we can actually do that.
Yeah, and I think those are things that have kind of transpired over the years is, you know, get them on our radar, you know, we don't know what's coming, but being prepared for those type of things. You know, the adult ed, you know, just to touch on that, the civic center has less barriers with environmental contamination, asbestos, based on our initial investigations, and it's about half the price of the adult ed center, just for scale in comparison. The jail is just going to be really beefy construction to take down. You're going to have extremely thick walls, security improvements and things that it's going to take a lot of extra work when, if and when that comes down.
Jails and hospitals are built pretty stoutly in general.
Okeydoke, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Feel free to reach out if something comes up, you guys hear something, talk to us directly. Like I said, or like we had mentioned, we're kind of keeping an open comment period through, through April, so we want to take feedback, and if we need to pivot on something, you know, please advise us as such.
Hey, we will move on to a discussion of the liquor license that was sent to city council for the hotel.
Yes, thank you. I'm very happy to report tonight that the final certificate of occupancy has been issued for Hotel Royer. That happened this afternoon, and they received their public health permit late last week. So due to the timing of these two things, which are both required for the liquor license, there wasn't time to get this on as an action item for tonight's agenda, but we wanted to keep it on as a discussion item. The representatives from the hotel are here tonight, and they're happy to answer any questions. And then we'll bring this back for your vote for the license at city council next week. But by doing it this way, you'll still have your two opportunities for discussion like you would on a normal basis. But in the timeliness of it, we need to get the license approved by next Monday. But what's, what's before you and what was sent to council is the memo. It's pretty, it's standard. It's a standard liquor license application. They're applying for an H liquor license, which is for hotels, and it allows the holder to sell and serve all types of alcoholic liquor. And once they get the local liquor license, then of course, they have to, they have to have the local liquor license in order to apply for the state liquor license. So this is the first of the two steps that they're going to have to go through. But I would, if you have questions that you'd like to ask the owners tonight, they're here to answer questions.
Mary Alice?
So, of course, my first question is, if it is approved, when does it open?
I'll let them address that question. Come on up to the microphone, please.
April 16th is our anticipated opening date. That's the date that we've been agreed to with Hilton, and that's the date where we're going to be planning to open.
Wonderful. And are you taking reservations? How would people?
Yes, we are taking reservations, and we are accepting guests, events, of all such.
Okay, excellent. My next question is for the mayor and perhaps the finance director. Remind me, I know that we did a hotel boutique extra tax. Did we also do something on food? And I thought we did extra on food, but am I incorrect?
So, we didn't do extra on food and beverage, but we anticipated that we would reserves, specifically reserve the food and beverage tax revenue that comes from the hotel to pay the debt service for the incentive.
Okay, yeah, so, so basically, you hope to get a check from the city on April 16th, the first day that you open, right? I think that was the agreement, and.
It won't happen on April 16th.
I know, but roughly rather. And just for the public, the pay, to pay that back, there were two pieces. One, as Elizabeth said, was the amount of tax revenue from sale of food and also the extra additional hotel boutique tax, and I'm assuming also just the regular hotel tax.
Well, and the property tax increment as well?
Yes, yes. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sharice?
What I want to know is, April 16th is your soft opening or your grand opening?
That is our soft opening. We will announce a grand opening event afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just a lot of excitement, okay? Thank you.
I was there today. It's beautiful.
Okay, we will go ahead and move on to new business. The first item is ordinance number 2025-04-010, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number seven omnibus.
I think this one is pretty routine, but as you know, this requires, this will require in council six affirmative votes because it's a budget amendment. There are just a relatively small number of items here. The first is using some vacancy savings in Public Works to reallocate for the purchase and installation of an ARC GIS server. And I know Tim would be happy to answer more questions if you have any about that that are very specific. The second would be making a change to reallocate $270,000 in community development block grant funds so that we can prioritize spending for equity and quality of life projects from CDBG. As you know, we have an interest in getting that money committed and drawing the funds as soon as possible. There is also a rebudget for the fire department in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund for a special operations truck and also separately for equipment related to that. That's used for the technical rescue team, I believe. Additionally, the equipment services staff have determined that we have another significant fire truck repair needed, and so we need $60,000 to replace an engine in one of our frontline pieces of equipment. That's unit 254. And then also just a small correction in a transfer between CD grants and the CD special fund to correctly allocate funds to pay for the administration of grants.
Questions for Elizabeth? Mary Alice?
I don't know if this is for Elizabeth or Tim or both. I wanted to ask about the ARC GIS server, so I have three questions about it. Right now, it's slated at $50,000, but I know that ARC GIS is an annual renewal cycle, so it would be good to understand what that cost would be. My second question has to do with staffing. I know that we used to have a GIS person. Last I had heard, that person had left. I don't know if we have filled that position. And then my third question is with CCGIS and why we are now doing something in-house instead of partnering with them.
Those are great questions for Tim.
I saw Tim nodding. I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, so the first one, this is really just a hardware purchase at this point. It's not subscriptions. That being said, hardware will, you know, ideally, we would have some kind of recurrence upgrade in the future for that type of stuff. The intention now is to pay for the capital expenditures to bring it within, and there are requests pending moving forward to also fund future replacements of that stuff in future budget cycles for the hardware itself. And that includes both server and storage for those, for ARC GIS. Number two, we do have a GIS coordinator that we hired three months ago? Six months. Time flies. Six months ago, Nick Beltramelli is now our GIS coordinator here. We had about a, not quite a year gap, I don't think, between our last GIS specialist and since he started. He's been a great addition, picking up quick and, and running with it, but he is staffed within Public Works and has been there for six months now. That's right, probation period covered. And then the third question, we are still maintaining a relationship with the consortium as a membership agency managing regional data. In the past, Urbana was a little bit different than a lot of the other partner agencies. We were actually trying to contract with them to manage our hardware and our data for us in addition to the, our regional collaboration as well. And what that's done is that's kind of introduced some barriers now that we're getting more advanced and we're trying to integrate with more softwares and stuff, because now we're trying to navigate between the city's security networks and our data as well as theirs to connect to third-party softwares that it's making it more challenging. That's why we've, we've said, let's bring this back in-house, we'll have control over it, we'll still integrate with them, we'll push and pull data back and forth with the consortium. You know, they generally are going to be looked as kind of like the regional data managers. So, you know, regional data that crosses our boundary lines with our other agencies are good examples of things that they should manage. And then we can manage our individual data sets individually like Champagne does. Champagne has a setup very similar to this. Many of the other communities have this setup as well. And then some of the smaller communities lean on them for more administration stuff that maybe we're not going to have to in the future.
So just as a quick follow-up, so do we currently have a license for ARC GIS? It sounds like we do.
Yes, yeah, we pay about $25,000 a year in licensing fees with ARC GIS for Esri.
All right, and I, I don't know what the licensing fee is of in terms of the server versus an individual one, but it would be good to know if by next week, if our annual costs are going to increase for ARC GIS.
Currently, there's no intended plan for that. The hardware piece, we are, we are projecting a meager financial increase to handle that hardware replacement via the VERF at some point because it's a new piece of hardware for us. But I think you're, we're looking on the scale of less than $2,000 to manage that because some offsetting costs with administration that we're having the consortium do previously.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Grace?
Thank you. I'm trying to understand the EQL transfer. The memo says that CDBG, that these were CDBG funds that were originally designated for equal projects but not spent.
So I think, I think they were designated in a prior year and then not spent, so to get them into this year's budget, we have to amend the budget.
And then the last sentence in that paragraph says that the future use of corresponding savings from capital improvements will be determined later.
Correct. So, so as I said, we're trying to prioritize spending and committing and spending CDBG money because we don't know how long that will be available to us or at what level. And so this is an expense that would otherwise be in the capital replacement and improvement fund, but we coordinated between CD and Public Works and identified an opportunity to, to use those CDBG funds for this purpose.
So, just to clarify, this is funding we would have just rolled over to next fiscal year, but instead of doing that, we're electing to spend it in this fiscal year by applying it to an eligible EQL project that was completed.
That wasn't originally planned for, right? Like, an additional one? Because we already had planned CDBG funding in EQL projects, isn't that right?
We, we did, but we had more funding set aside. We had about $700,000 in CDBG total set aside. We ended up spending about $500,000. And again, as is our typical practice, to roll over those unspent balances, which is roll over those unspent balances, which is what we've done in the past when we have, you know, unspent balances of CDBG or other HUD funds. But this way, we can make sure we're committing and spending it this year rather than rolling it over to next year.
Okay, thank you. And then another, maybe not question, just throwing in a comment, but if anyone would like to respond, feel free. About the fire apparatus engine and just another note that, you know, my recommendation and viewpoint of trying to limit using the large fire trucks only when necessary for other calls where it's not needed, especially since we've seen that those are big, expensive, and time-consuming repairs, that they're used when they're needed.
Yes, Ms. Grace. To speak to the fire truck repairs, I'm not a mechanic, but the Spartan engines that we have have had tremendous issues with overheating. And it was our fleet manager's decision to replace the engine because we've, he's disassembled and reassembled it several times, which leads to additional issues. And so, the decision was made to replace that engine. The entire, and I'm not talking about the fire engine, I'm talking about the actual engine inside of the truck, enabled, in order to get us into a position of having some warranty on that engine. So, that decision was made by fleet.
Thank you. Grace?
Just to piggyback what Grace Wilkinson said, chief, and this is kind of a metro-citywide conversation as to you, the majority of your calls are medical. And what Grace just mentioned, why are we sending the big red trucks to those medical calls? And I thought we bought a smaller multipurpose vehicle recently. But maybe this is a conversation for later. But the public is always wondering, why do we go to medical calls with the big red trucks?
Thanks for that question. It is a conversation for later, but the short answer is, that's the vehicle that we have to get our firefighters around. So, but it's a much larger conversation that's needed.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'd like to move for approval to City Council ordinance number 2025-04-010. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance budget amendment number seven omnibus on a regular agenda.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice.
Any discussion? I thought another question.
Yes, Grace.
For EQL, does it have its own fund or it's just in the CIP?
It doesn't have its own fund. We've paid for EQL improvements from the capital improvement fund with money that's passed through from the general fund, but we've also paid for EQL improvements with community development block grant funds. And I'm not recalling any others that we've used. But EQL is a program. It's not a fund. Any further discussion? We have a motion for approval just to confirm. Sharice, that's correct?
Yes.
Seconded by Mary Alice. With no further discussion, since it's not final, well, even though it's a budget amendment, we can still do voice vote because it's not, since it's not final action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Please, any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have resolution number 2025-04-021R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond authority, private bond cap allocation EIEDA series 2025. Nick?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, items two and three under new business are closely related. As you can see from the titles, these both relate to the city's annual allocation of private activity bond cap. So, I'm going to provide a quick overview of those items together, and then council can decide whether to discuss and vote on those together or separately. So, as you may remember from previous years, each year, a certain amount of tax-exempt private activity bonds are allowed to be issued in the state of Illinois. The state governor's office allows home rule units proportional to population to cede their allotted bond volume cap to other organizations to provide low-cost financing for a variety of eligible activities, which include affordable housing purposes, nonprofit development, and some economic development activities. The deadline for local governments to make these allocations is May 1st, after which, any unallocated bond cap would be returned to the governor's office, and they would decide what to do with it at the state level. The formula for determining the amount of Urbana's bond cap in 2025 is $130 multiplied by the city population, which this year comes out to $4,967,170 in bond issuance authority. As was the case last year, the city received two requests from organizations for a portion of its bond cap, one from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, or IHDA, and one from the Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority, or EIEDA. Just to provide a quick overview of what those organizations do, Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority uses private activity bonds to finance affordable housing developments and economic development activities in a 10-county region that includes Champaign County. Past activities in Champaign County have included affordable housing developments like Haven at Marketplace, Providence at Thornberry, and the Eden Senior Housing Development in Champaign. As a regional pool of low-cost financing, it would be a potential resource that future qualifying developments in Urbana could potentially tap into. And then, the Illinois Housing Development Authority uses private activity bonds to finance new affordable housing development in Illinois and also to provide mortgage assistance to income qualifying households. Ida did provide us with some numbers for its single-family loan program for Urbana that show between 2015 and 2024. 127 Urbana households received assistance through this Ida program. This totaled in just over $15 million in mortgage volume over that time period. And these are programs that Ida partners with local lenders to match households with. So, staff are recommending that the city split its 2025 volume cap equally between the two organizations, and have prepared two resolutions to that effect, one for each organization. This would transfer $2,483,585 of private activity bond volume cap to each of the organizations. Last year, council also voted to split the city's bond cap between the same two organizations equally. On March 25th of this year, the Community Development Commission reviewed the resolutions and voted to forward them to the committee of the whole with a recommendation of approval. So, it's a quick overview, and I can take questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Nick? Mary Alice?
I'll make a motion if there aren't any questions.
Please do.
Okay. And I'm going to just make, and I'm happy to make the second one as well, but either an omnibus or this requires two votes. So, I'm just going to go ahead and do them individually. I will move on to the consent agenda, resolution number 2025-04-021R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bonding authority, the private bond cap allocation to EIEDA series 2025.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Any discussion? All right. There's a motion on the floor for the consent agenda with no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, sorry, I'll give Shandra a moment this time. Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Is there a motion for this? Mary Alice, thank you.
I move on to the consent agenda, resolution number 2025-04-002R, resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bonding authority, private bond cap allocation for IHDA series 2025.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Any discussion on this one? Mary Alice?
I just want to say thank you. I believe it was IHDA that provided some of the numbers in terms of mortgages. So, I think that was helpful for us to know how those money, how those dollars are being leveraged in our community.
Any further discussion? All right. We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda on the floor. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have resolution number 2025-04-023R, a resolution amending an Urbana Home Consortium rental housing developer agreement Park Glen II Limited Partnership FY 2024-2025, formerly WODA Cooper Companies Inc. Brayden.
Good evening, everyone. So, before you is a resolution that authorizes the amendment of a previously approved rental housing developer agreement on December 10th, 2024. Council passed resolution 2024-12083R, which approved a rental housing developer agreement with WODA Cooper Companies. This agreement provides $50,000 in home consortium funding to the construction of an affordable housing development in Champaign. Nothing about, the specifics of the agreement have changed. The amendment is required due to an oversight. The name of the company was incorrect on the original agreement. It was indicated as WODA Cooper Companies. The name of the entity we are granting the home funds to is actually Parker Glen II Limited Partnership. The two entities are affiliates. They're working together on the project, but Parker Glen II Limited Partnership is the entity that's actually overseeing the day-to-day construction and overseeing the funding as well. So, that's the only change to this agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Brayden? Okay, is there a motion? Mary Alice?
I will move on to the consent agenda, resolution number 2025-04-023R, a resolution amending an Urbana Home Consortium rental housing developer agreement with Parker Glen II Limited Partnership for fiscal year 2024-2025, formerly WODA Cooper Companies.
I'll second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, we'll have a vote. So, it's been moved by our, seconded by Grace for the consent agenda, sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2025-04-009, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to a license agreement east half of Urbana Parking Lot 1, PIN number 91-21-08-458-001.
I'll take this one.
All right.
So, this amendment would allow the license agreement that the city has with Rose Bowl for the half of Urbana Parking Lot Number 1 to start on April 1st instead of May 1st. And so, that would be for this year, 2026 and 2027, because it's a multi-year agreement. And to the extent that they would avail themselves of an early start in April, then that, the amount of that would be prorated on a per-day basis based on the otherwise monthly fee of $500. And I know this has been super popular. Rose Bowl has just been prolific in their programming of the space. And so, I know we would like to do anything we can to support that. So, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Carol? Grace?
Thanks for the explanation. I think this makes sense. I was just wondering some of the details of, like, what counts as the day that it's set up? Like, if, say, they did an event April 15th and then the rest of the month, and say the tent was up still, like, is there a clear line about, like, when they're using it versus, like, when cars are parked there and what that means? Like, if they set up on the 15th, does that automatically mean they have to pay the rest of the month, or it's just each day it's in use?
I think that's the intention, that it's a commencement of basically the season for them of using the lot. So, whenever they choose to commence, that's when the agreement starts for that, that season.
Oh, so even if they use it like one day, April 15th, that would be also every-day payment through the rest of the month?
Yes.
Okay. Is that laid out in the wording kind of clearly? Because I see a lot of things about the daily rate.
Let's see.
So, just, just a...
I'll have to go back and look at this in the context of the entire agreement, but I'll look at that before next Monday and let you know if there's any further modifications that are required.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
But before I make that motion, I, when I look at the resolution for, I think the, there's numbers, item two, item five, I see that they reference the numbers in the lease, I'm assuming. It does look, doesn't read very clearly, the one about the rate for April. So, definitely taking a second look at that would be great. And for that reason, I'm going to put it on the regular agenda. I'm going to propose that we do that. So, resolution number 2025-04-023R, resolution amending, sorry, this is an ordinance, my bad, ordinance number 2025-04-009, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to a license agreement east half of Urbana Parking Lot, PIN number 912108458001, to City Council regular agenda. Second.
I heard Sharice first, so we have moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice for the regular agenda. Is there any discussion? James?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that when they set up, we actually add parking or traffic control signs and so forth. I assume that's why we have to have 10 days' notice that they're going to set up. So, it's not something that we can set up and take down from a public work standpoint day by day, right?
Right. But I think, I think it's probably likely that we could be more clear in response to what Grace was asking. I think we could just make that a little bit more clear.
Make it clear it's an initiation date.
Yes.
And from that point forward.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Moved by Mary Alice for approval, seconded by Sharice for the regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Next, we have resolution number 2025-04-024R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the use of lots owned by the Urbana Free Library 201 and 202 West Green Street. Carol?
I'll take this one also. So, I do have to say that this has taken longer than any of us would have liked, but if you, if you look at the attachments to the IGA that we're seeking authority to enter into, you may recognize images that were presented in 2023 by Stephanie McMahon. And we've been working since that time on an agreement with the Urbana Free Library, and there's been change over there and change over, you know, for us on the economic development team. But now, we have an IGA that will allow the city to use the two lots that the library owns at 201 and 202 West Green and install the elements that are represented in the attachment. So, on the, on the southwest corner would be this Urbana feature, which you've seen before, which is the large letters of Urbana that could become a, it will have chairs on the back of it, and it'll just become a focal point for photographs, but it's also a welcoming element. And the timing really couldn't be a whole lot better, you know, now that the hotel will be open and so forth. And then, on the other corner, we would install a stage that's made out of a shipping container. And then, the chairs associated with that will actually be stored in the shipping container. And staff is working with, you know, we have this multi-year agreement with 40 North on programming, but then other, you know... But then other, you know, other community groups and so forth would be eligible to do programming as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the IGA, if you have any.
Any questions? Chris?
You might have said it, Carol, and I spaced out. But how long will this be? Three years, did you say? You said temporary, but...
I didn't say, and it's also, it's two years. And then it automatically renews for one-year terms until either of the parties says they're no longer interested in continuing it. I will say that this was all done in the spirit of lighter, quicker, cheaper. So it really is an experiment. And I think, you know, between the programming that Rose Bowl does already and, you know, we'll be having furnies at some point, not, not in the next year for sure. But, you know, we want to see how, does this, the intent is not to compete. And hopefully, it will complement those two venues in particular. But, you know, it's, it's to try something that will enhance the public realm.
Mary Alice?
I like these lightweight items that we can try out and figure out what works and what doesn't work. My main question has to do with programming. And you had mentioned that 40 North would be assisting with that. Are we basically hiring them to do that piece? Or how does that relationship work?
We have an agreement with them. It's a multi-year agreement to assist in doing some of the things that, you know, like the postmark, some of the weekend festivals. Because we, our staff can't do, can't independently run programs like that. So that is also an experiment. You know, our relationship with 40 North is kind of an evolving thing. And I think it was a three-year agreement, if I remember. So we'll assess how that's working as well and see if that's something we want to continue or if we want to try a different approach. But that's, we have an existing agreement with 40 North.
Okay, thank you.
Grace?
That was one of my questions was about the scheduling, because that's in here, that it's going to be our city responsibility for scheduling and maintaining the calendar of events. So you're saying that will be 40 North doing the legwork and posted on the city's website for a calendar of events? Or have you figured out that?
Well, we've talked, we've, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't answer that particular question. We have talked about hiring someone separate to maintain a calendar of events so that it, that it has, that it's more robust than sort of just whatever anybody heard about or whatever, that it was very intentional. We have not done that yet. But that would be an ideal complement to this, is to have a full calendar of events of what's happening in and throughout Urbana, which we really don't have right now. So I can't say who will be keeping the calendar. But the programming, I think, will fall primarily to 40 North. But the library fully intends to do programming also. We just have to coordinate. We're sort of the keeper of the keys, if you will. And, and then we'll, we'll collaborate with, you know, Park District or whoever happens to want to use the space, you know, on an ad hoc basis.
Thank you. And then I had another question that it was also our city's responsibility for providing outdoor garbage receptacles?
Yes.
And I didn't know if that implied end recycling?
I say that...
That implied end recycling receptacles?
I will make sure that that is clear.
Because I know if garbage, yeah, means landfill trash exclusively. But it seems like it would be in line with our Urbana values to have recycling and landfill trash receptacles.
Yeah, I had talked to Tim recently about, you know, you know, you got to mow this grass and stuff. And I'll just make sure that he understands that it's recycling as well. I'd be surprised if I don't get the reply of, I know.
Sure, somebody's already considered that. Just wanted to double check.
Okay, thank you.
And then one last one. When I was looking at the drawings, which I think are very exciting little layouts, I love the little people there, exciting possibilities. On the corner with the Urbana sign, it looks like, at least on this drawing rendering, there's like tables and a little garden spot and cornhole. And so part one of that question is, are those also planned to be included? And then part two was, have we talked to the township neighbors about any integration or coordination with their existing kind of garden, outdoor hangout space there?
Yes. I don't know how many of the pieces of furniture are in the budget. But I know we have a fairly robust budget for, yeah, we have $15,000 in the budget for tables and games and chairs and things. So I think that the intent is to have pretty much everything that you see. We have always intended to have, to continue the garden space for the township. But we needed to get this IGA done first because it has to dovetail in terms of either party being a, they will, I'm going to use the term sublease, even though this isn't a lease. But the township will sublease from the city now. So we had to get the timing lined up for the prerogatives of the parties to cancel this agreement so that the township wouldn't be, you know, in a position where they would have a garden that they would no longer have the authority to run. So we'll layer that in after this IGA gets, gets approved. But yeah, it's the intention to have the garden space as they do now.
Thank you.
James?
Okay, I may not have been paying attention lately. Is the, is the plan for the sculpture that's in the 202 lot to be removed? Or has it...
It's already gone.
Removed? Okay.
Yeah.
Sharice, did you have a question?
I kind of did, and then it left my brain.
Okay. Let me know if it comes back. Are there any, any other questions? Is there a motion?
I, I will make a motion, and I will move this on to the consent agenda. I'll move Resolution Number 2025-04-024R, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the use of lots owned by the Urbana Free Library at 201 and 202 West Green Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Discussion? Chris?
Thank you. I attended the last confluence meeting with Stephanie McMahon at the Champaign Public Library. And a U of I architecture professor, whose name I'm forgetting unfortunately, as we discussed these same plans, he looked over at my name tag and walked over and pointed to our classic Urbana leaf, the U-leaf logo, and said that it would be better, instead of the Urbana letters, to do this, a big sculpture of this instead. And I agreed, thought it was a great idea. I don't care for the lattice behind the letters. It looks tacky. It's not as nice as what Champaign Public Library did with those freestanding stone letters. But boy, what a difference in cost, right? So someday, I would like to see a durable, permanent sculpture of our Urbana U-leaf logo someday. Also, that storage container for a stage across the street, to borrow Alder Person Hershey's aesthetic criticism, that, those could be those, storage containers are butt ugly, unless you put a paint job on them. So I would just maybe advise that. I'm not going to be a stick in the mud about all this. I think it's great that we're doing some experimentation. I'm all on board for a three-year experimentation to activate those spaces. So thank you, and I look forward to seeing it as is.
Sharice?
Now I think I'm trying to remember something that I recall, I think that we actually met, that I would have met regarding with the Board of Trustees at the library. We were discussing this particular space and what can be done with it. And I believe, to be honest, that the logo was one of the things that we had actually thought that would work better than a sign that said Urbana. So if, I was just wondering, when did this, how long have, has the city in the, in the library, the library been working with this together?
How long have we been working on this agreement? Is that, is that the question?
Yes.
I would say for a year and a half.
Okay.
And this, just to round out the, the information, this is going to the library board tomorrow night.
I know.
Okay.
But I just, I was like, I know, I know I've heard of this before. And I'm sure it was from a library board meeting.
Yeah. And these, the images that you've seen are, they might not be identical, but they're, they are the same theme that was presented in 2023 to get feedback from council.
Okay. And Chris, regarding what you were talking about with the, with the, the storage thing, I think that's every intention for some art, a local artist to actually render some type of, of beautiful something on that. Because I would have to agree with you. I don't think like a bright orange and something would, you know, that says cargo number would be very aesthetically pleasing for the people at the Hotel Royer to have to look at every night. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by James for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. All right, next, we have Ordinance Number 2024-12-042, an ordinance establishing approval policy and reporting requirements for policing, surveillance technology, and databases under old business. Grace?
Thank you. I don't have really any updates since the last time we've talked. I still think that it would be good to take a little more time, some new city leadership, and hear from some more experts and community members. So no updates on my end. Always curious if there's any updates from the executive side that would be relevant here.
I can say during this break, staff did have, did take some time to work on this ordinance. But we don't have, they didn't have enough to bring recommendations to tonight's meeting.
Are there... Yeah, Mary Alice?
I had some proposed changes to definitions. I know that I had sent Grace that and wanted to have that as part of the conversation. I, I don't know what the best way to go about that would be. I don't know if I should bring them to the next meeting, print it out, so that we can have that conversation. I'd just like some guidance in terms of how we can move that conversation forward.
Any feedback on that? Grace? Yeah?
I mean, from what I recall from, I think we had emails with Darcy as the clerk on this as far as just procedural meeting, that it would need to be a formal amendment that's approved by a majority of council, or that you propose a separate ordinance. Because I do not accept those recommendations as a friendly amendment. I think that the recommended changes and definitions, as I recall, would make this ordinance only apply to databases controlled by the city, which I don't think is well-defined. And I think would make the ordinance pretty meaningless because I don't know that the city controls, if you mean like owns and operates, any of these surveillance databases. So I think that that's really problematic with those proposed definitions because I think it would make this ordinance useless and would mean nothing because it would apply to no surveillance databases that we use.
Okay, well, that's new feedback. I appreciate that. My intent with controls was that this is a database that the City of Urbana updates. So it's information that the City of Urbana is putting into something that is not a federal database, right? It's, it's something that's local, for example, and I can't remember the name of the new system. It used to be called ARMS, but it's a different system now. So I'm more than happy to work on that, on that definition of controls. I didn't realize that that was your, your reason, that you, you didn't like those items. But I'm happy to do that. And are there other items that you felt were needed further clarification?
On your proposed definitions?
Yes.
I'd be happy to revisit them, and I'd be happy to talk more. I feel like I've, I've emailed, called, texted you quite a bit over the past couple of months and have been very eager to have these kinds of conversations. So I'm absolutely willing to talk more. Please feel free to reach out.
Sounds good.
All right. James?
So I, I believe we have to have a motion to send this to a future committee of the whole meeting. One of the things I heard from Grace was a desire to push the discussion of this past May 1st. And so my question would be if we should just move it to the next committee of the whole meeting or move it to the first committee of the whole meeting in May, based on that desire?
Grace? And I believe when this was brought up with the clerk, which Raphael is deputy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if you have an answer, slash Matt and the others here, my understanding from what Darcy had told us is that it can stay in committee of the whole for an indeterminate amount of time.
Yes. So there is the option to move to a specific date, if you had a date in mind for May. But we can keep it in committee of the whole indefinitely, I suppose, if that's what you said.
Mary Alice?
If that's the case, and, and we are wanting to have input from the future mayor as well as potentially other experts in the field, I would propose that we could just keep it in committee. There's going to be a lot of things for the new mayor to come on board with the budget and so forth and allow him to be part of that conversation in terms of when it would be appropriate, if that meets with everybody else's approval.
James, I saw your hand as well.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I think the indefinite keeping in the committee of the whole, I understand that. But I think we have to take the, an action each time it's on the agenda to retain it, to, to keep it in the committee of the whole. So that, that's a clarification I want to make, that we, we can't just say we're leaving it in the committee of the whole. We have to motion to retain it in committee.
That's correct. All right.
I'm moving to keep this discussion in committee of the whole.
Okay. Was, Mary Alice, were you making that formal recommendation already? Just to clarify, this is a little bit of an unusual process with this.
Yeah, I just want to understand. So if we keep it in the committee of the whole, it will appear on every committee of the whole agenda moving forward until we do another action? Is that correct?
Yes, unless you specify a date that you want to move it to.
All right, so let's move it to the second committee of the whole meeting in May?
So I'll be honest, I've lost track of whether yours was an official recommendation to begin with. So I don't know if we're working with a motion from you or a motion from Sharice.
Sharice is the one who did the motion, who was talking about the motion. I was asking for clarification.
You were asking for clarification. So would you like to amend your motion, or would you like to...
I will amend my motion to moving this discussion to the second committee of the whole meeting in the month of May.
Do we have a date for that?
That would be May 9th, actually, May 19th, it appears.
May 19th?
Second.
Moved by Sharice and seconded by Mary Alice. I like having a date because that means we'll continue to keep bringing it up, looking at it. So is there any further discussion? Grace?
Just wanted to echo that point that I agree. I don't want to lose momentum on this. So I appreciate the flexibility, taking a little more time, and setting a, a date to revisit it again in the future. And I do hope that in that time, that on the staff end, there can be some more information, evaluation. I know Matt had talked about reaching out to some other cities in Illinois who have done this. I've been reaching out to some other experts. And I hope that we can have some more resources and information at our disposal. at our disposal the next time we talk about this in May.
Okay, and so just to, oops, sorry, go ahead, James.
I, I just need, I'm going to ask Mary Alice to confirm something. I think she mentioned a ordinance from Evan, Evanston, was it?
Yes, there, there is a, I think that's the only ordinance. Oak Park.
Oak Park? Okay.
Yes, Oak Park, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure we knew which ones were out there to look at specifically.
There, there are actually two in places that are, Oak Park is the one that is specifically in Illinois. I don't believe there are any others in Illinois that are of a community of our size. There is actually one in Ohio of a smaller community that I did come across, that was kind of interesting as well.
Matt, did you have a comment as well?
I was just going to affirm that Oak Park is the, the other community in Illinois that's, that's discussed and then eventually adopted. I have played phone tag recently, last week and this week, with their current city attorney and former city attorney, who was the attorney at the time that this ordinance was adopted. We have not yet found common time to schedule a conversation, but that's in the works, so.
Right, so just to clarify for folks, if you have recommendations or suggestions, talk to Grace as the primary author of the existing ordinance, and we'll look for additional feedback from city staff as well. So we have a motion to keep this in the committee of the whole until May 19th, from Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Just checking, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have one.
Mary Alice?
Sorry, I was just reviewing to see exactly what Darcy had said about this, and I actually don't have a response from her on the best way forward for us to have these conversations about the different definitions and so forth. And if, if I have missed it, but I just looked at least the original inquiry that I had. So I would like clarification on, on some options that we might have as we move forward, and we have time to do that.
Okay, sounds good. Are we ready for a vote? Okay. All those in, wait, can I do voice vote for this, right? Because we're not actually taking any action?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, just, just clarifying. All those in favor of keeping this in the committee of the whole until May 19th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to council input and communications. Any input? Grace?
Just wanted to say that for the alternative response program, I know that's another one that some people have been following and looking forward to, making some progress on. Just wanted to say quickly that we did meet as the selection committee, and should be finalizing some of that soon, and so should have some more information coming out. But just wanted to say that there's been steps taken on that, and hopefully that will continue, keep moving with that process. I think it's really important that we continue this holistic, community-based approach that we've been working towards for years. And I'm really curious slash concerned about some implementation exclusively by the police department about sensitive topics like domestic violence and community resources and mental health. So I'm looking forward to continuing this community alternative response creation, and really would like some more information on anything else that we're doing that is outside of what we've been planning on for years here.
Any other council comment? Yes, Chris?
I just want to acknowledge Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood and Bishop James Underwood. For the 10 years, King James, correct, they sat in council meeting and turned in a public input slip to have the Dr. Ellis sewage issue resolved. For 10 years, they did, sat there and gave that request. And I just want to acknowledge that now that we're finally making some headway and good progress on it, I just want to acknowledge their amazing steadfast contribution.
James?
Yeah, I just, I want to congratulate mayor and council on the news we heard tonight of a planned opening of the Hotel Royer. I want to thank all the city staff and everyone who has worked on this over time. It's, it's been a long time coming, and so I'm, I'm glad to see it finally there. I cannot tell you how many people ask me about this on a regular basis. And, and so thank you for the developers for working on it. I knew it took a long time, I know we went through some struggles with the timeline, but it's really good to hear that it's finally here, and it's going to make a difference for downtown Urbana. I'm looking forward to see the life that it brings to downtown.
Any other council comment? I want to quickly say thank you to Mary Alice for being our regular motion maker. It's no small thing, and certainly appreciated. And I also just want to echo the excitement about what's happening in Urbana, and, you know, certainly seeing Dr. Ellis finally getting the attention it needs in our downtown. And I was at a show at the Candy Club last week where the line was around the block. So it's just really exciting, you know, got to go to Yellow Rabbit. Like, there's great stuff happening in Urbana right now, and just encourage our residents to get out there and check it out. Okay, that being said, we are moving on to closed session per ILCS 120/2C11 pending litigation. Just a quick note before we take a, a vote to move into closed session, for anyone who's still watching, immediately after closed session, we will be adjourned this meeting. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I will move that we go into closed session for the reason that Jaya stated.
Moved by our, our mover and seconded by Sharice. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, roll call.
Oh, we got to do a roll call, just kidding. Roll call, please, clerk.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Councilperson Evans?
Yes.
Councilperson Hershey?
Yes.
Councilperson Colasetti?
Yes.
Councilperson Bishop?
Yes.
Councilperson Wilken?
Yes.
Councilperson Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. All right, we'll go into closed session. All right, we'll go into closed session.
Can I move we come out of closed session?
Second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.